Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board to order and read the following statement. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded, and they are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting. It in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. So is anyone recording this meeting? I don't hear anyone. Members of the Select Board who will be participating in our meeting this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. So I'd like to start this meeting by acknowledging a sad and tragic anniversary. Today is May 25, 2021. One year ago today, George Floyd was killed in Minneapolis. This sad anniversary was marked at the White House and across the country. President Joe Biden issued a lengthy statement today that concluded as follows, quote, "The battle for the soul of America has been a constant push and pull between the American ideal that we're all created equal and the harsh reality that racism has long torn us apart. At our best, the American ideal wins out. It must again," unquote. Here in Massachusetts, our Attorney General, Laura Healy, issued the following statement today, quote, "George Floyd should be alive today. Let this anniversary be a reminder to all of us to keep going and to root out systemic racism wherever we find it," unquote. I am confident that I speak for all members of the Select Board, including prior members, as well as our newly elected member, when I say that racism has no place in Hingham, that each of us is committed, and that collectively this board is committed to affirming justice and equity for all. Thank you. At this point, I'd like to welcome the newest member to the Select Board, Liz Klein. And I see that Eileen McCracken is here, and we'd ask you to do the honors of swearing in our newest Select Board. I know that you already swore her in earlier, but I think it's important for members of the public to see this.
Thank you. Are you ready, Liz?
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Elizabeth Klein.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the Select Board.
Perform the duties of the Select Board.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
According to the bylaws of the Town of Hingham.
According to the bylaws of the Town of Hingham.
And the statutes of Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So this was an important moment for you, Liz, for this board, and for Eileen. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Next item on our agenda is to reorganize the board. Mary Power is no longer on the board. She was our Chair. We miss her already. And so next order of business is to elect a new Chair for the Select Board.
Joe, I would proudly make a motion to nominate and appoint Joseph M. Fisher as Chair of the Hingham Select Board.
Is there a second?
A second.
I'm not going to third it. So at this point, I will take.
But you need to accept it.
I thank you. I accept. And so we'll have a vote, all in favor, by roll call. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Thank you all. Next order of business is really a salute to Eileen McCracken. This may have been the last person that you're swearing in. Is that possible, Eileen?
Not yet.
Not yet. So there's still, there's still more to come.
Yes.
But the Select Board would really like to honor you, not only for your years of service, but for your commitment to the town. And it's overwhelming how much you've done and how much, for each of us, you've made a difference in our lives. We have a proclamation, and I am wondering the best way to proceed. I think what I'd like to do is have, and Bill and Liz, do you have the draft of the proclamation? Hello?
But I don't see it.
Liz, do you have it?
I do. I have it.
Okay. And Bill, do you?
Is it, was it emailed to us? I did not see it. Yes.
Well.
It was this afternoon, Bill.
So Liz, so what I'd like you to do is for, you have it, Bill?
I do. I got it.
Okay. I mean, I think we all share our thoughts. I think Bill, probably you go back. Did she swear you in as a much earlier, decades ago?
1998 as a Recreation Commissioner, Riley?
Yes.
So, and I know you swore me in on the Conservation Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'd like each of us to read a portion of the Declaration. So Bill, if I could start off with you reading the first, let's say, the first three paragraphs, and then.
Three paragraphs?
It's a saga. So, one, two, three, four. So if you could start with the first three, and then Liz will take over after that.
Be proud to do it. The Hingham Select Board hereby issues this proclamation for the exceptional contributions of Eileen A. McCracken. Whereas you, Eileen A. McCracken, Hingham Town Clerk for 24 years, and Town Employee for 34 years, have left an unforgettable legacy on the community through your remarkable record of service, residing over two dozen years of elections, including six presidential elections, and whereas you successfully introduced early voting to the Town of Hingham and processed a record-setting number of early ballots for the presidential election in November 2020 with the COVID-19 pandemic, prompting residents to vote early, either in person or through the mail. And whereas you have an unparalleled depth and breadth of knowledge of the Town of Hingham and have handled your duties with grace and enthusiasm, and.
Liz, if you could do the next three, please?
Whereas, no matter the time of day or reason one stops into the Town Clerk's office, you are patient, kind, extraordinarily helpful, and always have the best interests of the town at heart. And whereas you so fittingly earned the distinction of being named Hingham Citizen of the Year for 2016, as you are the essence of this community. And whereas you infuse life and vibrancy sprinkled with a sense of humor into our town hall that lifts the spirits of all who work and visit here. You have been the link to the past, present, and future of the Town of Hingham.
Now, therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for all you have done on behalf of this great town, and we wish you and your family much happiness as you begin this next chapter in our life, in life. Signed this 25th day of May, 2021, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein.
Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure.
I have joked with you many times that we're buying a ball and chain that we're going to attach to your legs so that you can't go too far. But we really are so grateful for everything you've done for us. Thank you.
I don't think you've seen the end of me yet.
Okay, good. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes from May 14, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 14, 2021.
I'll second. All those in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Joe, I and Liz, I assume you're abstaining?
Abstain.
Yes. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 18, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Joe, I and Liz?
Abstain.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to authorize the Chair to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls on behalf of the Select Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56. Michelle, do you just want to walk us through what this is about?
Sure. So this is something that we implemented during COVID because Town Hall was closed for a period of time, but this is available to the board outside of COVID as well. Basically, this Mass General Law gives you the ability to select one member of the board to approve all of the payroll and other warrants for the town each week, which is something that our town accountant, Sue Nickerson, needs. So we proposed that we authorize the Chair to do this. In the past, we had named Karen and then Mary. By taking the vote just as the Chair, it'll stay with that position going forward and would allow Joe, in this case, to review and approve these on a weekly basis.
And this is important because they need to be signed for payroll to be processed. So we definitely want to move forward. So are there any questions about this by members of the Select Board? Bill or Liz?
I have no questions. Ready for motion when you're ready.
No questions. No questions. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions about this? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the Chair to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls on behalf of the Select Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56.
Do a second.
Second.
Now we'll do a vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Terrific. Next item on the agenda is potentially to sign a contract with Shrewsbury Landscape, Inc., for athletic field turf maintenance. And I believe we have Mark Thorell here to discuss that, along with Kathy. Kathy Riley?
That's correct.
Great. So can you walk us through, Mark and Kathy, what is being proposed?
Sure. Mark, you want to describe it?
Sure. So we're proposing that the town hire Shrewsbury Landscapes to handle the turf maintenance townwide across all athletic fields. This would include all infield openings and coming back mid-season to clean up the infields, as well as a whole fertilization protocol across town fields. Core aeration, deep tiny aeration, top dressing, overseeding, so the whole package. They would essentially be handling everything with the exception of irrigation, which will be a separate contract that Kathy and I are working on right now. So they would be doing the brunt of the work across the town.
And what is the cost on this?
It's a two-year term. So they quoted us for each year. And Mark, you're looking it up, right? I'm sorry. I had it up and I can't, I don't have it. But it is from a statewide contract, too. It's from a state contract. We got quotes, and they were, had excellent references.
The total in the contract is $408,875.86, but I did not see a breakdown of year to year.
Oh, I'm sorry. I sent that yesterday.
Is it one of the exhibits, Michelle?
I believe it is. Let me see if I can pull it up. Yes, it should be an overview of the price, one of the documents we provided. Let me just find the right page. Where's the price sheet? Okay, let me share this. So here's the breakdown between year one and year two.
Great. Okay, Bill Ramsey, any questions?
I have no questions. Thanks, Mark.
Liz Klein?
Mark, could you just confirm that the year one cost is the amount that we had put in for the FY '22 budget for the field maintenance?
This is within that budget. I don't think it's the exact same number, because there's a whole irrigation piece to this. So I don't think it's the exact same number that was approved at town meeting. This is a good portion of that, though.
Okay.
So to put that a little differently, you have not exceeded the amount that was authorized.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Great. Thank you.
Any members of the public with comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion on the Shrewsbury Landscape contract.
Liz, you want to do it?
I make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract with Shrewsbury Landscapes Incorporated for Athletic Field Turf Maintenance in an amount not to exceed $408,875.86.
Second.
Okay. Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe Fisher, aye. Great, thank you. Next item, I believe, is also the same team of Mark and Kathy, that's to sign the contract with East Coast Seal Coating for the Plymouth River Tennis Court Repair Resurfacing.
Sure. So Joe, this one, yeah, is just to resurface, have a vendor come into the courts at Plymouth River Elementary School, they'd come in, fill in the cracks, and apply adhesive over the cracks, and then repaint all six courts.
And do you have experience with this vendor?
The town does. The rec department does not, but the town does.
And their references were excellent.
Yeah, that's what I understood as well. Liz, you have any questions on this one?
Mark, could you just confirm the timeline and if this project will be done before school starts in September?
Sure. So Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we had in the contract that the ideal timeframe was the last two weeks of August before school starts.
Exactly. Yep. It has some wiggle room to go into September, depending on weather issues or any other things. So there is more bandwidth in the contract. But yes, I believe August 16th is the first date that we put down. And there were two bidders. One was disqualified because they forgot to put their bid sheet in. But East Coast checked out well, and it should be fine.
Who was overseeing the work for this vendor?
I will be overseeing it, Joe.
Great. Any questions from members of the public? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. Bill Ramsey?
I make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract with East Coast Seal Coating Incorporated for Plymouth River Tennis Court Repair Resurfacing in an amount not to exceed $64,560.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll do a roll call vote. Liz Klein?
Aye.
Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
And Joe Fisher, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, the two of you, really, for really spearheading this and overseeing it, Mark and Kathy. I know that you're instrumental in this process, and the field work has been a long time coming. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Next item on the agenda is a request from the Hingham Girls Softball to install a shed on Carlson Field. Who do we have to speak on this proposal?
So I don't see Mr. Amelia on the line tonight, but essentially, Hingham Girls Softball is proposing to construct and install a shed on Carson Field, which is owned by the Select Board, so that they can store some maintenance equipment and other equipment there next to the softball field and not have to lug it back and forth between coaches and other houses, you know, so that they can store everything right next to the field and be able to use it. Emily Wentworth, our zoning administrator, has looked at this and made sure that it does comply with zoning rules. And we've put together some conditions through the vote, where basically the Town, Hingham Girls Softball, would pay for this, would apply for the permits to install the shed. The town would then own the shed, but we would not be responsible for, you know, any damage or anything associated with the contents in the shed. We would also expect that Hingham Girls Softball would maintain and clean the shed, make sure that it's free of trash, and the town would have the right in the future to remove the shed if necessary or relocate it. We have done something similar on Lynch Field in the past, but that is essentially the request before the board this evening.
Bill Ramsey, do you have any questions on this?
Looks like we, did we lose Bill?
Oh. Then I will start with Liz, and maybe Bill will come back.
There he is.
No questions.
Yeah, I see him almost back.
Bill, we lost you for a second.
Yeah, I was trying to restart my video. It seems to be not working tonight. Bye.
Bill, did you have any questions on the proposal from the other requests from the Hingham Girls Softball?
No, no questions.
Michelle, exactly where is the shed going to be placed?
I will.
If you can put it up on the map, that would be helpful.
This is not it, but this is. If you are standing in the parking lot at Carlson Field, looking towards the building, it would be behind the building, right to the right here of the softball field.
Yep. And I am assuming, because Emily reviewed it, that there are no zoning issues, and that it's not in a wetlands, or there's no conservation issues that would make the placement of this shed questionable?
That's correct. She made sure that it is confirming with the right setbacks and other zoning regulations.
Great. Well, I mean, this is something that I believe the Hingham Girls Softball has been asking for, and I am glad we are prepared to accommodate. So I will accept a motion on the request from Hingham Girls Softball.
All right. I would make a motion that the board approve the installation by Hingham Girls Softball of a shed on Carlson Field in accordance with the specifications and in the location set forth in the submission received by the Select Board on May 19, 2021, at the sole cost and expense of Hingham Girls Softball, subject to the following conditions. One, Hingham Girls Softball is responsible for obtaining and is hereby authorized to apply for all necessary permits for the installation of the shed, and such installation shall be done in accordance with all applicable laws, regulations, and permits. Two, upon installation, the shed shall become the property of the Town of Hingham, and the Town hereby accepts said gift under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half. Said shed may, from time to time, be relocated or removed in the direction of the town. Three, the shed shall be used by Hingham Girls Softball only for the storage of equipment for operation of the league, which use shall not be exclusive. The Town shall have the right upon notice to Hingham Girls Softball to inspect the contents of the shed. And four, all property kept within the shed shall be stored at Hingham Girls Softball's sole risk, and the Town of Hingham shall have no responsibility or liability for the contents of the shed or any damage to the shed or its contents. Hingham Girls Softball shall be responsible for cleaning, maintaining, and repair of the shed. Hingham Girls Softball shall, sorry, will post a sign reflecting this information.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Now we go to a vote. Bill Ramsey?
Aye.
Liz Klein?
Aye.
Joe Fisher? Thank you. Yeah, Michelle, you'll let Steve Malia know?
I will.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Kelly on behalf of Kate's Table for Polyfair Star Spirit of Discovery opening reception at Ware River Farm on Thursday, June 10, 2021. Who do we have here to speak to this?
I believe Ann Smith White from the trustees may be able to speak to this one and the next one.
Is Kelly here? Kelly?
I do not see Ms. Griffin on the line.
So will the trustee address this, please?
Hi, so I'm Ann Smith White. I'm the new Portfolio Director for the South Shore, and I oversee the Ware River Farm and World's End Properties.
If you don't mind, just your address for the record.
The work address?
Yes.
Okay, so Ware River Farm is 140 Turkey Hill Lane.
Great. And are you a resident of Hingham?
I am not. I'm a resident of Duxbury.
Thank you. Go ahead. Please, proceed.
So are you looking for, I'm sorry, this is my first Select Board meeting. So are you looking for a description of the event? How can I be useful?
Yes, a description of the event and what approval process you've gone through. In other words, typically for a one-day wine and malt beverage process, there's a consultation with the local police chief to make sure everything's in order, that there's no concerns. So if you could just step us through what is going to happen and the steps you've gone through to make sure that it's going to happen properly.
Sure. So this is an opening reception for an outdoor art installation that's going to be out on the Orange Trail of Ware River Farm. It's about a half-mile trail. It'll have five exploration stations, which are wood plinths that have a Polyfair Stars artwork displayed on them. So Polyfair Star was a well-known Boston artist who lived, her family owned Ware River Farm at the turn of the century. So this is a reception. We'll have about 75 people, members of, you know, trustees, members, some donors, members of the foundation that supported this project. We'll be serving beer and wine, and I believe Kate's Table is going to be creating individual serving plates for each person, so there's no buffet or anything. We've worked with the Board of Health to make sure that this all meets the COVID protocols that were established before everything opened up last week.
Yeah.
And we're in conversations with the traffic officer to make sure that we are in compliance with parking.
And this would be from the hours of seven to nine, is that correct?
I believe it's five to seven. It's an afternoon-evening cocktail party, and people will have a drink, and then they're, you know, encourage them to walk down and see the art installation before they leave.
Michelle, can you confirm the time? Because that seems to be. Michelle, can you confirm the time? Because that seems to be different.
Let me look, because we have it down as seven to nine. Let me just confirm. I see Sharon on the line. I'm going to see if we can find it quicker. One-day licenses.
It is five to seven. I apologize for that. It's written on her, on her description here also.
Yeah, I do see it.
Yeah.
Should be five to seven.
Thank you, Sharon.
And Michelle, can you confirm what review process this has gone through, whether with, you know, the chief of police or others?
Yes, Chief Jones has reviewed this request and the one after it and has no concerns.
Terrific. Liz Klein, do you have any questions?
No questions. Sounds like a great event. Thank you.
It does. Bill Ramsey.
No questions. Just, I know these events are very popular and it's great to be able to do these again and just love your property down there. Beautiful.
Yes. As we all emerged from COVID, these events will have special meaning to many people. Are any member of the public have any comments or questions on this request? Hearing none, I will take a motion on this. Bill?
Liz, you want to do the first one and I'll do the second one?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Kelly Griffin on behalf of Kate's Table for Polythair Star Spirit of Discovery opening reception at Ware River Farm on Thursday, June tenth, twenty twenty-one, from five PM to seven PM.
Second. All those in favor, Bill Ramsey.
Aye.
Liz Klein.
Aye.
Joe Fisher. Aye. Were approved. We'll move on to the next request for the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stell Wagon Beer Company for a picnic at Ware River Farm on Thursday, June seventeenth and Thursday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. I know Ann Smith White is here. Is Michael Snowdale here?
I don't see Mr. Snowdale on the line either.
So can we get a similar report from the trustee on this proposal?
Sure. So June seventeenth is the first of our sunset picnics at Ware River Farm. This is a series that's going to carry us through the summer and into September, so the seventeenth and the twenty-first are the, or twenty-fourth are the first two. And Stell Wagon will be serving the beer. They're going to have their beer truck there. We'll have a food truck there. We'll have some live music. We're selling tickets to approximately a hundred and fifty people, maybe more if we can add some tickets. And it's just going to be a lovely, relaxed evening for, it's going to be family-friendly for people to bring their picnic blankets and their picnics and watch the sunset from Turkey Hill. So we've cleared this. We have parking details set up and we cleared this with the Board of Health before we submitted.
And similarly, has there been a review by the Hingham Police Department?
Yes, there has, by the chief. No issues with this one either.
I noted that the estimated attendance is estimated at two hundred and fifty.
Oh, one hundred and fifty. Right now.
Okay. So questions from the select board?
Is the four-thirty to nine time on this one, is that time you're looking for, Ann?
Yeah, the event starts at five, so four-thirty will be loaded in for the food trucks and the musicians. And the event runs from five o'clock until sunset, which is later in June than it is in August and September.
Great, thank you.
Liz?
Just one question, just to clarify. Will we approve the food truck as well, or is that a separate?
I believe the food truck is a separate approval. So each of the beer vendors, the breweries will apply for their special one-day permits.
Okay.
It's similar, in a similar process to this. So we have six different breweries who will come before you with their permits.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, and I can confirm our health department is the one that permits the food trucks in town, so they do that annually. And we're going through those. There's always an inspection that's required at the beginning of the year, so they're going through those now.
Okay, great.
But am I correct that there's not a special one-day permit for the food truck? It would just be for the liquor, dispensing of liquor?
That's right.
Okay, any members of the public have comments or questions? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Michael Snowdale on behalf of Stell Wagon Beer Company for a picnic at Ware River Farm on Thursday, June seventeenth and Thursday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, from four-thirty PM to nine PM.
A second?
Second.
We come to vote. Liz Klein.
Aye.
Bill Ramsey. Joe Fisher. Aye. It is approved. I believe that's all of the motions that we need to be considering this evening. So with that, I'd like to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a call for talent bank applications. This is how town government runs in Hingham. We have volunteers who step up and serve on various committees and boards. And now is the time to submit your talent bank applications to be considered. The moderator, along with the members of the select board, will be interviewing candidates to serve on numerous town boards and committees. Some of those committees are familiar, such as the Advisory Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Cleaner Greener Hingham Group. Some of those committees are not so familiar, such as the Development and Industrial Commission and the Cultural Council. And some of these committees are new committees that were created at the last town meeting where we had the Climate Action and Planning Committee, which will consist of eleven residents from Hingham. Two of those appoint, to be appointed by the moderator and two to be appointed by the select board. And then there is also the Accessory Dwelling Unit Study Committee, which will consist of seven members, one to be appointed by the moderator and one by the select board. So there are numerous opportunities. And we really count on residents to step up. If you have served in the past and want to continue to do so, or you want to, never done it and you want to try it, please submit your talent bank applications. We will be scheduling interviews. My expectation is sometime in mid-June. Bill Ramsey, do you have anything you wanted to add on the talent bank applications?
No, other than anybody who hasn't been involved, who's interested in getting involved. You know, please submit a talent bank application. There are kind of wonderful committees. If you're interested in a committee and we have the ability to, we have a vacancy on a committee, we do try to fit people with the greatest possible. We try to help to get as many people involved as we possibly can. We run on our volunteers. And I can tell you, anybody who's interested is that when we get recommendations from our committees on different issues in town, we put, we give tremendous weight to those recommendations. So I think last year we had a record number of applicants, Joe, right? It was like seventy or eighty applicants.
It was, it was, I think we must have had, what, nine, at least, at least nine evenings of interviews. It was, and we were both overwhelmed and touched by the devotion that so many people have to the town, their willingness to give a lot of time and effort to make this town what it is. And Liz Klein was appointed to the Master Plan Committee as a result of this process. Am I correct, Liz?
That's correct. That's correct.
And
yes, I encourage everyone to fill out the application, either hard copy or it's very easy to fill out online. And certainly, you know, express your preference if you have something in mind. And then, of course, you go through the interview process. You might not get exactly what you, what you had in mind, but you, you won't get something you don't want to do, right? That's the promise. When you're interested in.
That's right. And it won't be a surprise. We won't, no one will be appointed to commit, to committee and learn about it for the first time, that that's, that's where they're going.
That sounds more fun, Joe.
So the talent bank form is online at the town website. There, I actually have the URL, the web address, which is rather long. I don't know if there's a shortcut to get there, or if you can post it, Michelle, so that folks can easily find it.
We can do a newsflash. As Sharon kicks off this process, we'll, we'll make sure there's something right on the homepage announcing, you know, where to find everything for people.
Yes. Or, I mean, the easiest way to find it for me was just to do a Google search for Hingham Talent Bank application and it pops right up as the first, first entry there. So again, we really do look forward to seeing as many residents who are interested stepping up. Next, our COVID nineteen update. Michelle?
Sure. All right, bit of a lengthy report tonight, so please bear with me. So I'll start with the data. So as of today, confirmed COVID nineteen cases in Massachusetts totaled six hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred sixteen. The seven-day average of new COVID nineteen cases in the state has been trending downward since early April. The statewide positivity rate is down to point nine-three percent, which is great news. And the seven-day average of confirmed deaths from COVID nineteen in Massachusetts has dropped to six-point-one from a peak of around a hundred and seventy-five. According to public health data released by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the town's designation remains in green for the second week in a row now, indicating a lower risk of spread in our community. There have been only sixteen new cases of COVID nineteen in Hingham over the past two weeks and a total of one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. Just a few weeks ago, those numbers are around eighty new cases every two weeks, so it's really dropping off. The average daily incidence rate for the town of Hingham dropped to four-point-eight per one hundred thousand residents and our percent positivity rate was one-point-zero-four percent for the last fourteen days. In terms of the vaccine rollout across the state, according to DPH's Daily COVID nineteen Vaccine Report, nearly three-point-five million people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of this afternoon. Vermont, Connecticut, and Massachusetts continue to lead the way nationwide in terms of percent of the population that is fully vaccinated, according to Johns Hopkins University. Massachusetts is currently over forty-seven percent. As of last week, Hingham, we're at fifty-four percent of residents being fully vaccinated, and I really love watching that number continue to go up. Just a quick reminder that the Empathy COVID nineteen Testing Center at three oh eight Cushing Street closed this past weekend. If you find yourself in need of a COVID nineteen test going forward, tests are available at CVS locations in Hingham, Weymouth, and Norwell, at Walgreens locations in Weymouth and Rockland, and at the Carewell Urgent Care Center in Norwell, among other places. In terms of reopening, so all remaining COVID nineteen restrictions are set to be lifted by the state this Saturday, May twenty-ninth, which means that all industries will be permitted to reopen, industry restrictions will be lifted, capacity will increase to a hundred percent, and the state's gathering limit will be rescinded. Face coverings will still be mandatory for everyone on public and private transportation systems in healthcare settings and in other settings hosting vulnerable populations such as congregate care settings. Non-vaccinated individuals are advised to continue wearing face masks and practice social distancing to help protect themselves and others from COVID nineteen. Locally, Town Hall and the Senior Center will return to full in-person staffing next Tuesday, June first. We anticipate reopening the building to the public shortly thereafter. The Hingham Public Library will reopen to the public beginning on June first. And hours will be Monday through Thursday from nine AM to five PM and Saturdays from nine AM to five PM with no capacity or time limit restrictions. Evening hours and in-person programming at the library will resume at later dates. The library's website has more details about those plans. And then finally, Governor Baker had announced earlier that he plans to end the state of emergency on June fifteenth. However, today he filed legislation to extend certain emergency measures that are set to expire on June fifteenth, when the state of emergency will be rescinded. The bill he filed will extend provisions related to the open meeting law until September first this fall. So that will give the state some additional time to consider possible permanent changes to the open meeting law that would provide for greater flexibility in conducting open meetings like this one through platforms like Zoom. The bill will also grant municipalities authority to extend special permits for restaurants offering outdoor dining issued under the state of emergency through November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, which is also very helpful. Finally, the bill will extend a protection that prohibits medical providers from billing patients who received COVID nineteen-related emergency and in-person services for charges in excess of costs paid by their insurers, so that protection would be extended until January first, twenty twenty-two. Those are my COVID updates for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, do you have any questions for Michelle?
I was thrilled to see the governor's legislation being filed today regarding the restaurants and extending the outdoor dining provisions. I know a lot of restaurant owners who I've been speaking with are very happy with that. And as a community, I think as a town, we need to put a plan in place to educate restaurant owners to the special permitting process and do what we can to help them. I know a lot of them want to keep this as a permanent part of their operations.
Yeah, so, I was going to say that, you know, to the extent that they are looking for more permanent permits, now is the time to start planning for approaching either the zoning board, planning board, Board of Health, and to the extent that there may need to be changes in zoning, it's something that folks need to look at so that next summer, we can continue having outdoor dining, which would be great.
Is there, along those lines, Joe, Michelle, is there some way we can notify the restaurants that have have the outdoor dining operations of the need to do that? I mean, a lot of owners don't know. I've had conversations with owners in the downtown area on multiple occasions, and they're just, they're just not aware that they need to do that, you know?
Yeah, I think we're going to work with the permitting departments and town council to put together some guidance similar to when this, the pandemic started and we kind of had a temporary, like a checklist for what everyone needed to do for the temporary outdoor table service. I think we can put together some guidance to provide to the restaurants who do want to pursue more permanent options. And then, you know, the governor's bill gives us more than a few days to try to scramble and figure that out, because it will take some time for organizations to go through the permitting boards too, to explore these options, but at least we get through this season and can look at more permanent solutions for next year and beyond.
That'd be great, because the planning board, their docket is very, very full as it is. And summertime, they take a little break. The zoning docket is pretty full. They may need some relief from us, you know, for sidewalks or lease agreements. So anything I think we can do to, just to, to, to create an avenue or a path for them to continue with relief would be awesome. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, our restaurant reopening group that we formed during COVID, which includes Special Town Council, Susan Murphy, they've been all over this so far, and that will be the main group that we'll work with to get that guidance out to everyone.
Yeah. Liz, do you know, is the Downtown Association working with the restaurants on these issues?
Yes. Yeah, so they, they're definitely aware of it, and I'm happy to get involved or follow up with them. But I know it's something they want to continue.
Yep, if you could reach out to them. And, I mean, Michelle and I have had some discussions as well about the best way to make sure that people are not caught. We don't want people to be surprised and all of a sudden they can't continue in a way that seems to be working. So that's great. Liz, did you have any, any other comments or questions?
No, no other questions. That's all good news.
Yes. Any questions or comments from members of the public on the COVID nineteen report? So, okay, Michelle, thank you. Really appreciate your effort. Really appreciate your effort. Now we turn to the next item on agenda, which is public comment. So typically in, at past meetings, there's a statement that the chair reads. I will read it at today's meeting. I may not be reading it consistently in future meetings. The Hingham Select Board encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to fifteen minutes for public comment on items that fall under the purview of the border, of the select board and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please seek to be recognized. Once recognized, state your name and address and address your comments to the chair. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibilities of the select board. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and not to indulge in personalities. The public comment period is not a time for debate by members of the select board. The select board is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So do we have any members of the public who would like to address topics not already covered during our meeting? Hearing none, next item on our agenda, Town Administrator and Select Board Reports. We'll start with Michelle.
I'm filling in for Tom tonight, but the one report I have is that, you know, given the governor lifting COVID restrictions, we've been informed that the Fourth of July Parade will be going forward and it is scheduled for Sunday, July fourth, starting around ten AM.
Great. Of concern to many of us, in fact, all of us, is how is Tom Mayo doing? Any word?
He is good. He is home recovering from his surgery. I have been communicating with his wife as we were trying to keep his work phone away from him, but we miss him here. We wish him the best. We'll be sending him some, you know, some cards and get well-sooned gifts and I think he's looking for Netflix recommendations as he recovers, if anyone wants to share them.
Great. Okay. Select Board, members of the Select Board, Bill Ramsey, any report this evening?
Yeah, just a couple things. First of all, welcome and congratulations to Liz and just wanted to commend all of the candidates that ran in this past election for all of the different offices. You know, for all of us who've been candidates, it's difficult to put yourself out there. It's a lot of extra work and time that you take away from your family and just want to commend everybody who won the election, everybody who ran. So welcome to you, Liz. Looking forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to you, Joe.
Thank you. Liz, any report to make this evening?
No report, but definitely want to say thank you to Joe, Bill, Michelle, the entire team at the Town Hall. Michelle gave me a nice tour today. It's an honor to work with you and I'm excited to serve the town, so thank you.
Thank you, and I echo Bill's comments. Really, we are looking forward to working with you and a thanks to everyone who ran, those who, who won, those who came in a close second or third. We really appreciate everyone's willingness to commit their time and efforts to the town. My only announcement is personal, which is tomorrow is my mother's ninety-seventh birthday and I will be busy celebrating it with her. Our next meeting is, will be scheduled two weeks from today for Tuesday, June eighth. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Bill Ramsey, let's do a vote.
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Joe Fisher.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Congratulations for our first meeting with our new select board member. Take it.
Thank you.